Yeah. All right, let's call the regular city council to order for the city of Galena, Illinois Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Take a roll call, Mary Beth.
Gates?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Keepa?
Here.
Tagmeyer?
Here.
Westmeyer?
Here.
Weenan?
Here.
Brenner?
Here. We have a forum. Next is the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move ahead on number twenty-five C day zero two six seven. The votes are standing committees. We have none tonight. Let's move ahead on number twenty-five C day zero two six seven or two six eight. Citizens comments not to exceed fifteen minutes as an agenda item and not more than three minutes per speaker. If you wish to address the council, step up to the microphone, state your name and your address. Okay, then let's move ahead then to consent agenda CA twenty-five dash twelve. Do I have some kind of motion on that?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda CA twenty-five dash twelve.
Second.
All right, then move second, uh, mostly for percentage on the CA twenty-five days twelve. Any discussion on any of this? Or for Stigmar?
Yeah, I'm curious, um, why the, on the consent agenda that when we have a bid for two prices, why, why we're not approving the one price? Why it's folded into the consent agenda when there's two bids? Do we, do we know? I mean, don't we have to, don't we have to like?
Uh, go ahead, man. You want, I mean, I know it's all on the same company or something, but yeah, we can, we can pull it out.
Usually like with the quotes and that, we put them on consent agenda for smaller, smaller project. And then the, when it's over the threshold for where we gotta go to bid, then I put that on, on the bigger items, like the regular scheduled item.
Right. I, I just, I just didn't know when there was a, a choice of two prices and we were going with one. Did we have to like, you know how we usually say for the amount of, and then we do that, but it's, is it, it's a?
Yes, it's a, a smaller item.
Cause it's a smaller amount, we don't have to. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on it? Take a roll call, Mary Beth.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keepa?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then to, um, unfinished business. We have none. Let's move right into new business. Item number twenty-five C day zero two seven four. Discussion and possible action on installation of nine general statues on the right descending bank levee near the floodgates. Uh, any type of motion on this? Or procedure, what's her?
I'll make a motion to approve the installation of nine general statues on the right descending bank levee near the floodgates. Twenty-five C dash zero two seven four.
Second.
All right, then move second. Item twenty-five C day zero two seven four. Discussion?
Only question I had is, oh, I was just curious of why they decided to change the location from what they originally proposed to the, uh, to the army for engineers.
Well, uh, we can invite them up to explain it to you. I mean, they wanna be close to Eli Washburn.
Right, I saw that.
That was my understanding. But do you want to step up to the mic, Jerry? All right, Dave?
I didn't hear the question.
I was just curious of what the right reasoning for, it's not that it's important, but what the reasons for moving it from the original location to the certain?
It started, it started about two thousand sixteen, talking about this. And then Washburn was, I think it was June of two thousand eighteen, I think he was in Florida. And at that time, we're thinking of the nine generals, the whole levee sort of giving it sort of, uh, showcasing them. But this, our visitors would walk up there and not quite know what's going on here. If they're all together in contiguous area, I think maybe in terms of the floodgate, you could see all nine of them right there together. And we wondered if I watched him because he had a sample approval on each and every one of them. I mean, I could go on and on about Washington, so underestimated the stuff that he did for our country. But that's the main reason. So they would be there. And Grant would be in the middle, sort of looking down on it. Granted, he had such a great influence.
Sure.
That's the reason.
You don't expect the army corps to have a problem with the new location?
No.
No, they, they gave an approval letter with, uh, certain tasks that they have to do. So we have to show them the final location and have it explored. It was all in that, right, including.
Terry?
Yeah.
Have you looked at any place over in Grant Park, uh, to put the statues?
We looked at that earlier. We looked at a number of different places earlier. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You had to answer the question.
The, the west side facing, facing like the high school all along there did look great there too.
Oh, it looked great. A lot of going up the steps, a lot of different places, I think. I, I think the power of educating our visitors, this one, but so they know, I mean, Cuba City's known for the presidents. They started in nineteen seventy-six. It was sort of made up thing. We don't have to make this up. Our, you know, nine channels. And we base our stuff on history. And for years, this guy has looked away from that. I hear my thoughts and we talked to Dave, David and I and other people to think that would be more bang for your buck. You could see all nine of them come to the floodgates. Yeah.
Oh, I've just been, I think Cindy Tagmeyer had a.
What, remind me what the cost is of this to us?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, this will be about two hundred dollars.
And then what about the upkeep?
That's your, that's your job.
That's our job, right? And they're over, they're over seven feet tall, correct?
Oh, I see a thirty inches.
Cause it was eighty-eight, eighty-eight inches with the pedestal.
Yeah.
They're the same size as Henry Taylor.
Yeah.
Just a little, Dave.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
You, you got your turn to speak a minute, Dave. Don't over, uh, shadow everybody here. But anyway, Cindy asked about eighty-eight inches. Is it gonna be eighty? They're just?
Those are pretty big. I'm just, I'm just trying to imagine what they look like. That's, that's over seven feet.
I'd rather have it the size of Washburn's, you know, at like eighty.
Well, it's a little bit shorter. And we thought on it, on the levy, cause it's down, Washburn is nice right here, but the levees, because we have like, um, uh, a sword hanging down, so it's gonna take it, you don't want to take it into the ground. It's gonna break, go right down. So I think danger is worked out. Is, is the stone eighty inches? I kind of forget.
It's, it's.
Thanks, Washburn helped too.
Yeah.
With some measurements.
I see forty-two.
Yeah, so it's about five. It's about five feet.
Was the.
And the bus is thirty.
Thirty inches.
The honor person, Johnson, go ahead.
I was just wondering, has, has it ever been considered down Main Street?
We don't wanna be glad, uh, we don't wanna be wrong, uh, South Dakota, what is it? Who is the city in South Dakota? They call themselves the President's Palace City for that.
Well, Cuba City too, but I didn't even know.
I, I don't know. It was discussed over time, but I don't want to. I think it would be more of a here.
I think we're trying to get the crowds off Main Street.
Yeah, that's, that's true. We, 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 yeah, off there a little. Not everybody's gonna walk down there and see them, but some people will.
Well.
My thoughts are it would be too crowded on Main Street if you put nine there. And this way you see nine all at once. So you don't.
Well, the thing of it, the thing of it is, Jerry, I think eighty-eight inches is too tall, period. The other thing is, house handicap people will get up to look at it.
Down at Irene's at the very end. Go down to the end of the, of, of, that's the only way, um, oh, Irene.
All the way down to Blacksmith's shop and come all the way up to Dyke and see it.
It's a little bit of a travel, but hopefully you have a modernized vehicle, modernized city.
Well, certainly hope so, but you never know. Not everybody is. But, um, I mean, I, I, I think, yeah, I'm still leaving it at eighty inches no matter what.
Okay.
Because I have not, my understanding is with this picture that we got on General Grant, correct me if I'm wrong, now General Grant's got his arm up in the air as a hat.
Yeah, right.
So it's not like the picture you showed in your, initially.
That was a gift though. That was, we just used a sample, maybe it was Rollins, but the Henry Taylor bus was supposedly the sample to judge the future one's on. Size.
I, I just, I just think it's gonna be way too tall. Order first, Stigmar?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think this is a, a fine idea. I just, I'm just a little concerned about how large they are and fifteen feet between them, that that really changes the skyline and the view of the bridge and the natural beauty that we have right there when you're, you know, watching the sun come up. And now you have those really big statues right at that, right at that point.
Well, they don't look that big outside.
Yeah.
If you look at the Henry Taylor, you can feel.
But they're.
One for the room and look there.
Rollins to room twenty twenty-two.
You, you keep mine eighty inches and I'd be satisfied with that.
Well, we've got a, they go down, there's a sword hanging down that goes beyond that.
Well, you know, I thought it was supposed, well, no, listen, I just thought it was supposed to be a bust. I didn't know the sword was gonna be involved. I didn't know the hat was gonna be involved, you know?
That was to make it look unique, cause Grant, what's our person?
Well, I, I know, but you, you should have came to us and informed us of why you were doing it. Now, you might have to mark or.
Everything is marked, Allison. I didn't dare. I don't know. I don't remember what else crazy you're, you're thinking.
Yeah, that was.
But, you know, I'm, I'm with Cindy Tagmeyer, order first Tagmeyer. The height of it is the thing that's gonna bother me the most. But, um, you know, yeah, but if you, um, it's up to the council. If they want them at eighty-eight inches, that, that vote will count that way.
It is deceiving. When, when Rollins was in here, he looked so big in the room, which you can outside in the sky and stuff. And I don't think we're in here with any, any, uh, visitors at all because they're all coming down on that end. So it really won't. He's been done with the fireworks or any of that kind of stuff.
Well, now that you're in the final stages of it all, you know, uh, I would hope we'd get some feedback from some of the citizens in regards to the placement of it and what they're looking like. But, uh, right now, it, we got a motion before this table. I don't wanna put them all in there and make it all kinds of complaint about it taking away the beauty of the dyke and the floodgate and all this stuff. But, uh, we gotta work together on this because there's quite a few of them. But I think you ought to lower them as best you can.
We haven't, we've talked about him a number of times. He's gonna be putting the pillars, where you going?
Well, you could cut the stone down.
Right.
The elements.
Yeah.
Cut, cut the stone down, then it won't be so high. It won't, it won't jump out at you, you know, the block.
And he's, oh, you're across the street, seeing part of, uh, Sergeant Tanner in the, in the park there. He, he's the same size as that one. He's lived, you know, from Park Avenue. He's almost two meters, he looks very small.
Well, that, that's tall over there, but I, you know, Isaac's tall also. But, uh, on the dyke there, when you're coming into town and, and the, the view, I know you wanna be by the Washburn Park and stuff. And I think that's great. Uh, just cooperate with us a little bit on the heights and whatnot, um, and, uh, go from there.
Sure.
Jerry?
Are we, are we gonna vote on lowering the, the statues or what are we gonna do?
Well, it depends. Somebody can make an amendment to make them, uh, the same height as, uh, Eli Washburn statue.
He's too short though.
He's, uh, what is his, six foot eight, something like that, almost eighty, eighty inches.
Well, they're saying the swords are touched.
You have it carved already that has a sword already carved into it?
It's all the, yeah, it's been cast.
And we should have forward back next month. We thought this will be done by the summer, the summer of the contract is maybe twenty twenty-six.
So.
Sorry.
Um, what, how does the sword hang down? I guess I.
To be attached to the.
To the bus or to the?
To the.
To.
So, yeah, grab it. Yeah, fast.
So instead of just the bus, you have it down to the waist with the sword down?
Yeah, it's got a sash.
There's a couple of the ones that they've gotten from all being, you know, see, everything's good. The, not just bus, we're trying to make it so it's.
Yeah.
Interesting.
We got them on display at the market house.
Yeah, I know.
About four months.
Yeah.
And we'll get the. The idea is to make them the same height as if that bus had legs and was a normal person.
Right.
That would buy.
Think it was sized as a normal person, you said?
Was the, well, with a normal guy. In proportion.
I'd be happy with that if you would do that, but especially down in that area. But, um, you know, whatever we vote upon tonight, you know, we'll still have to go back to the Corps of Engineers because we changed locations and we got them set up the way we do at that point. And we'll have to wait.
Do you need, uh, take care of, of the Corps of Engineers?
I'm sorry, what?
Well, who will take care of the Corps of Engineers?
We'll be sending it in when we met.
We'll, we'll assist through with that.
Okay, thanks.
Communication.
Yeah, the way that went was, um, they're concerned about Indian artifacts being in the holes, you know, with them. They didn't realize that all the dirt came. Out of my hands. Cause Mike Jackson said, uh, got a hold of the chief archaeologist at the state and he got in, we did, and he got in touch with, uh, the Corps of Engineers and that was, it was all good there.
Okay, but we're still gonna send this down regardless, because they still gotta give us the okay to allow you the guys put it there. Order, person, Jerry?
I'm fine with the location that you picked out. Um, I don't think it will pass that the way it is now. If you could go down to eighty inches, I think it'll be fine. If you can do that. They all don't have swords, do they?
Just me, Jerry.
Our swords only one. One guy uses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a Grant?
Uh, no.
He has a hat.
Oh, the hat.
He's got the hat, but they're on him up.
Jaycee's, yeah.
The guy has the sword. You give him up as close to the ground as you can. You know what I'm saying? But eighty inches is what we want, even if you have to lay him down. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, that'd be good. Um, I forgot what I was gonna ask.
Okay.
Who determines how deep, uh, the form or the?
The court is, I think, I think you want six feet or?
Four.
Five, four feet.
So you couldn't raise that, the court wouldn't go along with that to, to, to get them down or?
Well, the pedestal, you can, you don't have to have the pedestal that big. Bobby can just cut it off at say three feet. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
No, they have to have it in four feet to, the foundation.
Pardon me?
Can they go on here? You know, we had that brick?
Done on the water street level?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, on water street levels, there's right in front of where the cars are parked. We've got like a brick there. It's kind of.
Right.
Yeah.
You know. Yes, to me, it's more about the location than eighty inches versus eighty-eight inches. Just because of it being right up there for the view and that there's nothing on the, currently, there's nothing besides a, a plaque. There's nothing on that side of the levee, right? And so the, the views, and I take photos all the time there and from the other side, the views are unobstructed. And that changes some of that, right, with something new, where I think that they're great and the statues are beautiful and wonderful work and all of that, and we can celebrate them. But I'm just, I'm just concerned about the location in general, not that it's gonna change much whether it's eight inches one way or another.
Yeah.
Cause if you put, I'm sorry.
I mean, seven feet tall or seven feet.
Yeah, and if you put them down there, the, it doesn't matter the height and you'll still get to enjoy them there, right?
Where the cars are at?
Yeah.
You're gonna put them in front of the cars? I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead. We can't, we can't do too much with the dyke.
I, I believe the Corps approved the top of the levee because it was above where the, where the water, you know, design would be. And if it was down in the embankment of the levee area, it could interfere with actual water seepage and things like that. So they, I think that was the reason they approved it when it was above a certain threshold. So it would have to be out of the, out of the levee structure if it was down, I don't know, the street level.
Well, it'd be nice if we could, we could place them around town at certain spots, but I know you guys want them on the dyke, so. And we have a motion to put them on a dyke. You wanna make an amendment to, for the height on that, Jerry? Or anybody wanna make an emotion? For an amendment down to eighty inches or eighty-eight?
I don't have an issue with that. I just want that, the one that said.
The sword.
Will hang down too much?
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation is eighty-eight. I did a lot, a lot of sculptures in.
Yeah, well. Order, Chris, Katie?
Is the sword one getting cast at the fountain right now or is that one not been cast yet?
It's, yeah, it said it works, yes, on the wall.
Okay, that's fine.
If it was shortened to eighty inches, would the sword physically touch the ground or would it actually be in the ground?
It might be. I'm not sure how close it.
I mean, they used to stick swords to the ground all the time. Maybe, maybe it could just be in the ground a little bit.
I know, stabilizes.
I just, and you just bury the tip in.
Right, so it's possible, yeah, I.
I, I think the mayor said leave that one a little bit higher.
Well, it wouldn't look funny if one was different height.
You wouldn't even notice if it was a couple inches.
Well, I think you want them all the same.
Well, it's not gonna be the same, it's that sword.
Well, but I mean, the same height, you know, I think.
It was shortened this sword. Um, order, Chris, Katie?
I'll make a, uh, motion to amend the motion to eighty inches for overall height.
Okay, do I have a second on the amendment?
I'll second.
All right, move second on the amendment to allow the statues to be eighty inches in height. Uh, take a roll call on that amendment, um.
Tagmeyer?
No.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keepa?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yes. All right, motion carries. The amendment carries. So paid before us, we have the original motion as amended. Any other discussion on it? Take a roll call.
Keepa?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
No.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brenner?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, thank you, John. I'll try to take care of that. And we'll get the stuff to the Corps with you. I'll help you.
You know, I, I want things taken, and that's, uh, since we're not arguing about levy, levy in the future, we can, uh, have busts of the famous Meredith stuff.
Well, at least, at least a couple of them.
Make that one twenty feet, would you?
Yeah. That, that'll be at least twenty feet high.
Yeah, they're gonna be really big.
Yeah. Make sure it's bronze though, or gold. It doesn't make any difference. All right, thank you, guys. All right, then, let's move ahead on number twenty-five C day zero two seven five. Discussion and possible action on renewal of the debatability lease with, uh, Greater Galena Marketing Incorporated. Do I have some type of motion on that? Order, Chris, Katie, wait.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the depot lease at a rate of five thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars in rent, payable each month for four hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, with an increase to the capital expenditure of ten thousand dollars annually with Greater Galena Marketing Inc., item number twenty-five C dash zero two seven five.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, then move second on number twenty-five C day zero two seven five. Discussion. Katie, you wanna start it off?
Yeah, um, the, their proposed budget, um, is flat in income versus what, uh, their fiscal year runs, July to June. So their budget going forward is flat with a small increase over what they have right now as far as income. Um, it was agreed upon a long time ago, and this is what's told to me, if it's different, then it's different, that the in-kind rent of sixty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars is what Mark and they had agreed upon, which would equate to that five thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars a month. So I thought if we take that number, spread that out annually, that is what they agreed to be fair as rent. They could increase the rent. Um, they should be spending some of their money, obviously, on marketing Galena. Uh, they have an increase of wages of fifteen percent year over year. Uh, as a portion of revenue, they have twenty-nine point four two percent is their wages. And then at the end of this fiscal year, which just ended in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, uh, they'll have a net income, which I think is good that they have some money in the bank, of three hundred one thousand eighty-two dollars. So that was my, that was my rationale. I think the, the maintenance, reason for the maintenance increase, um, they have thirty-three thousand dollars budgeted. Uh, that maintenance, they said, is a combination of cleaning, landscaping, lawn care, snow removal. I think like some of those line items should be pulled out a little bit differently to see how much that is requiring us in maintenance. And I still think at five thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars, that's a fair deal to have for that building, that space, that location. That's it.
Okay, any other discussion on it? Jerry, did you have some? Oh, Cindy?
Oh, yes, um, I do wanna bring up, and maybe if we could ask Joe, if we do charge them rent, then the city gets responsible for taxes?
I believe it could trigger that, yes. Right, right now, it's a city building. I believe it's exempt from taxes as we sit here today because we don't rent it. I mean, the dollar's nothing. If we begin renting it, I believe it could trigger a real estate tax that will get assessed against the city. No different than when the city owned this, yeah, the city owned this building for years and rented it out. And we had to pay real estate taxes on that. So we may wanna check with the local assessor, but I believe that it could very easily trigger a real estate tax. I don't know what the tax would be on that building, but it could be more than the five thousand you're gonna be getting in rent.
And, um, would it be possible to, um, to explore maybe selling the property? If we don't wanna deal with, with renting it?
But then if the, if we ever did get, uh, train services, passenger train service restored, we wouldn't have the building. And I think it's important that we have that building just, just in the obscure chance we would ever get passenger train service back. But if, if it triggers a tax event, yeah, it could easily be more than the five thousand a year, um, in property taxes.
So I was just gonna say to what everyone just said, is there a way to table this item and find out those, find out those answers? Because it would be great if they pay us more than a dollar a year, um, in this situation. And it obviously doesn't make sense if we're gonna end up losing money if we trigger the taxes. So is there a way to table this item and find out those answers?
Alls I need is, uh, somebody to offer to table this till next meeting. Get a second on that. That's all I need.
I'll make the motion to table, um, item number, uh, twenty-five C dash zero two seven five till the next meeting so we can, uh, find out what kind of a tax, uh, liability we would have should we up the rent.
I'll second that.
All right, so Adam, that's tabled, and that's me. All right. Yes.
So don't we have to, to do something with that first motion?
Oh.
Or we can do that?
Yeah, it should be rescinded first because we had a motion on the table.
You rescind that motion?
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, second it, two seconds.
All right.
Rescind that, okay. All right, let's, uh, take a vote on that. Did you want Mary Beth rescinding? We don't need to?
No, we don't.
No, okay. All right.
Who made that motion to table them?
I made the motion to table it.
Cindy Johnson seconded.
Okay.
Okay, then, um, let's move ahead then on number twenty-five C day zero two seven six. Discussion and possible action on a contract for the twenty twenty-five Hill Street Utility and Street Improvement Project. Do I have some type of motion on that? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor? I hope we approve, uh, contract for the twenty twenty-five Hill Street Utility and Street Improvement Project in the amount of, uh, two hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and two dollars.
Item twenty-five.
Pardon me?
To who?
To Louis.
Louis Trent.
Francis. Item twenty-five C zero two seven six.
All right, do I have some, I second on that one?
I'll second.
All right, then move second on number twenty-five C dash zero two seven six. Discussion. Order, person, Stigmar?
I'm curious how Louis' bid is a hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars less than Fisher and how that could be the same job. What might be happening there?
Usually Fisher don't want it, you know, when they go that high, because they know they won't get it.
So they're, they're bidding over what it really is. It's not.
Yeah, they're right drawn to you, bidding, but they just don't have time to do it or they don't want it.
That they bid something crazy. Okay, I just was curious. That was a big, big difference.
That is, that is, it certainly is. Order, person, Cindy Johnson?
Um, my only concern is, are we spreading, um, Louis' trenching a little too thin? Because they are the, the two go to company that needs everything and will we get the projects done on time? That's my, you know, that's my question.
Certainly hope so.
Yeah.
Weather permitting, you never know. That's the thing. You know, you hope it gets, uh, on track and good stuff. Any other questions on that one? Take a roll call, Mary Beth.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keepa?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then. Item number twenty-five C dash zero two seven seven. Discussion and possible action on a contract for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Elm Street, Elm Street Water Main Extension. Any type of a motion on that? Autoperson Jerry Wester?
I make a motion to approve the contract for the twenty twenty-five Elm Street Water Main Extension Project in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents to Louis' Trenching Service, twenty-five C dash zero two seven seven.
I'll second.
All right, move second on number twenty-five C day zero two seven seven. Discussion.
I want to talk about how important that is to get everything connected.
Yeah. Well, they definitely need more of one way in up there, you know, because we shut, one, shut that source off, kills the whole subject, everything up there. Okay, take roll call, Mary Beth.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Sagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead. Item number twenty-five C day zero two seven eight, the warrants. Do I have a motion on the bills?
Make the motion to approve the warrants, item number twenty-five C dash zero two seven eight.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, move second on twenty-five C day zero two seven eight, the warrants. Any questions on any of the bills? Take roll call, Mary Beth.
Keeper?
Yes.
Sagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead. Item number twenty-five C day zero two seven nine. Autoperson's comment. Autoperson, Tamer?
I was just curious, and maybe the story part of it, for a few, a few updates, like the parking spot on Main Street with the hydrant. And I'm asking, and I've been parking there and doing the stairs, so I don't even know why I'm asking for that to be closed off. And I'm just curious of, of when that's happening and, and we talked last meeting about the additional funding possibility for A R C. And I don't know if they, they came in and met, if they came and met with you all. So I was just looking for an update on that and, and how our search for a new engineer is going and if, if Mr. Oliver, you needed any help doing double duty of two major jobs of the city, like how, how, how that's going. So we prevent burnout from Louis running the city.
Okay, is that all?
So it's just questions, just questions today. Thank you.
Autoperson Cindy Johnson?
I don't think I have anything for you.
Thank you. Autoperson Jerry?
Nothing tonight, Charlie.
Autoperson Katie, wait.
I have nothing today, thanks.
Autoperson Wester?
Nothing tonight.
Autoperson Roger Gates?
I'd like to come in and congratulate the Women Public Works Department. It's been raining like crazy. Grass shouldn't be slowing down this time of year. It's still growing like crazy, but the parks look great, the levee looks great. They've been doing a really good job of working hard.
Thank you. Okay, then, let's move ahead. Item number twenty-five C day zero two eight zero. City Administrator's Report. Matt?
Good evening. The, I had a lead a project in June for the bridge patching repairs on Highway Twenty Bridge, which would have commenced probably in August or so. Nobody bid on that project. And so they're pushing it to the, the next letting, which is August first. And that would result in a construction period that could potentially be right in the middle of the worst time of year for us. So we've requested that they consider delaying that to the spring if they can't get it done outside of our peak season. So we'll keep you posted on how that rolls out. But they are going to revisit that in, in August.
With that, can I ask a question on that project?
Just, we, when you, go ahead.
Well, I, I'm just curious. Would they have to, the bridge would be like one lane at a time or how would they?
It's a three-phase project with very complicated traffic control. So they're also reexamining the traffic control. That may have been the reason for lack of bidders because it's going to be very complicated. So they'll have to, it'll, it'll disrupt a lot.
An already problematic area.
Whippley, our audit company has completed their fieldwork and we're expecting a report on that in August. The movie that's being filmed that was requested previously to take place in July, received word back that they're going to shoot for the week of August eighteenth. It's not going to be just the one day, though, that was requested previously. They're, they're going to be here during that whole week, for most of that week. And so there are some additional requests for street closure and things like that that I've, I've gotten some details on that I'll present for approval at the next council meeting on July twenty-eighth. We had some green street damage again from that storm on Friday night. It was a pretty bad surge. It's, it's another leak right on that same manhole. We had some plugs in the, the river outlet to prevent the river from coming back in, but those got blown out on the storm on Thursday night. And then when the storm hit on Friday night, it, it overpressurized, but I think that the street could have gotten blown apart even worse if we did have those plugs in because of the surge that we saw elsewhere in the downtown. And so it's about thirty bricks we're going to have to take out and put back in and make, and we'll re-inspect that with the contractor that repaired it last year to make sure, you know, there wasn't something going on there. So we'll get that repaired soon, hopefully. Lastly, the city landfill, we're going to open that every day this week and through the weekend until eight P M for folks to clean up from the storm damage and get a little extra time to get that over to the landfill. And we did post that on social media. And if you have large branches that are in your yard, you can, you can drag that out towards the street and our public works will be going around looking for people that brought that out to the street so we can get that cleaned up. Just please don't block the sidewalk when you drag those out.
And give us a call. Give us a call down at City Hall that you had something to pick up to. That also helps a little bit quicker.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, man. Move ahead. Twenty-five C day zero two eight one. Mayor's report. I too want to thank the city crew and for the good cleanup of the town and storms and stuff. And I'll say to that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the items listed. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the items, including section two, C one, employment, employee appointment, hiring, fire, compensation, discipline and performance, item number, section two, C five, purchase of lease or real estate, item, section two, C twenty-one, review of executive session minutes, item number twenty-five C dash zero two eight two.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, move second, go into executive session. Take roll call, Mary Beth.
Sagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you all.